It is seven o'clock. We will call to order this May eighth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the Scarborough zoning Board of Appeals. If I could ask everybody to stand, and we'll recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. If I could ask Doreen to call the roll.
Christine Snow?
Here.
Michelle Stevenson?
Here.
David Bork?
Here.
Peter Freylinger?
Here.
Richard Silkman?
Here.
And Joe Doherty?
Here. With that, we have a quorum tonight. We were aware that Kyle Noon would be unable to attend, but just remind me, it's been several months. Who will be all the voting members this evening?
You have enough voting members.
No, no, I think we've got six people here.
Yep.
So who is the alternate tonight?
The alternate would fall to Joe.
To Joe, okay. Again, it's been several months. I'm sorry, Brian. Again, thank you to everyone. This is our first meeting since March thirteenth, and that was a brief meeting. So welcome to today's regular meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals. We will now come to order. This is a public proceeding, and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, the public has the right to hear everything that is being said and to view all the exhibits that are presented. Please notify the chairperson, me, if you are unable to hear or see the proceedings. We work from a prepared agenda, and we'll take up tonight's items in the following order. First, the approval of our minutes. Second, a six-month extension from a prior appeal, number twenty-seven fifty-six, for Neil and Heather Jamison. We will then enter into the regular courses business for appeals number twenty-seven fifty-nine, a miscellaneous appeal by Northwest Civil Solutions on behalf of April Bailey, DBA Bailey Seafood, and appeal number twenty-seven sixty, a practical difficulty variance appeal by the design company on behalf of Sun Porch LLC. At that point, we'll have comments, and we'll look to adjourn. The, I'll remind everyone that this is a public hearing. The burden is on the applicant to demonstrate compliance with each of the criterion provisions of the applicable appeal. The board will ask questions as necessary to understand the nature of the appeal as fully as possible. When all testimony has been heard, the chairman will close the record, and the board will adopt findings of fact for each criterion of the appeal, and vote to determine if the applicant has met the burden of proof necessary to meet that criterion. It's important to note that if the appeal or special exemption criteria have not been met, the board must deny the appeal or application. In many cases, the appellant or the landowner may have a personal problem which prompted the request for the variance. Please understand that this is not legally relevant for the appeal. Again, we're here to find findings of fact, no matter how sympathetic the board may be to the appellant's situation. After we vote on the merits of each criterion, a motion may be made to approve the appeal, and if there is a second discussion will follow. The board will then state conclusions of the law based on the findings of fact to support a decision on the motion. In most cases, the board will request that staff prepare a draft written decision based on the stated findings and conclusions, as well as supporting materials in the record for approval at the next meeting. So with that, rather than going into extraneous detail on where we go administratively from there, why don't we get right into this? First, we have the approval of minutes for the March thirteenth meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
David, thank you. A second. Thank you, Christine. Any discussion? Any comments on the minutes? Seeing none, could I see a show of hands to approve? That is unanimous. The minutes are approved. The next item is a request by Neil and Heather Jamison from appeal number twenty-seven fifty-six, an appeal last November, for a limited direction of yard size appeal. The extension request is due to contractor scheduling issues. Is the applicant here or the appellant here? If not, that, I don't think that's an issue. We've talked about this before. We've expected extensions to be requested going forward, given the paucity of contractor availability, and particularly in the wake of the storms that we've seen in the last few months. So do we have, could I see a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, David. Second. Christine, second. Are there any comments on the motion? Seeing none, again, we have talked about this in the past. Could I see a show of hands to approve the motion? Thank you. That approves. And Brian, you'll take care of the paperwork and do all that. Great. So that gets us into our regular business, which is, we'll start with appeal number twenty-seven fifty-nine, miscellaneous appeal by Northwest Civil Solutions on behalf of April Bailey, doing businesses Bailey Seafood, one sixty-five Pine Point Road. And we have a gentleman up at the podium already. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Jones, Jones and Warren, Scarborough, Maine, here. I'm sitting in for and handling this for Jim Fisher at Northeast Civil Solutions because he had a scheduling conflict tonight. So Jim is, you know, did the application, and him and I have worked together in many cases. So I'm handling this tonight for the presentation on behalf of April Bailey and Bailey Seafood Restaurant. So what's, April is here to answer any questions, my client, but tonight is basically a miscellaneous appeal to resume a non-conforming use, because more than a year had passed before Bailey Seafood Restaurant was able to reopen after a catastrophic loss, which was caused by a frozen pipe, interior pipe. So the facts really, basically, this site has been used as a restaurant for over seventy years, in various different names, as you can tell from the application. But it would, it's really been a restaurant before there was even zoning here in Scarborough. And it's been operating by the Baileys for the last twenty-five years or so as Bailey Seafood Restaurant. In Jim Fisher's application to the board, he enumerated many of the issues that basically happened beyond the control of our client, April Bailey, that really caused the restaurant to have to close down and not reopen for almost, almost two years now. But first was the untimely and unexpected death of her father, April's father, in the fall of twenty-twenty-one. And unfortunately, three months later, in January of twenty-two, is that's when the pipe burst, frozen pipe burst, and went unnoticed for five or six, five or six days, caused substantial interior damage to the property. So, and then the last few months and year, it's really been the pandemic, the COVID pandemic, and the inability to line up contractors and to get electricians and flooring people and plumbers and HVAC and refrigeration. It's just been having to deal with the insurance company to adjust, and three different insurance adjusters. And then once you, you think you've made it past that, that problem, you've got a bunch more issues to come. So, you know, restaurants are pretty complex and highly regulated industry and commercial enterprise. So it's just taken this long to really get back to where we're ready to now open the restaurant, reopen it, and resume the business. So I want to, we've laid out in the application, of course, the facts, but it's basically that it's just been impossible to really deal with not only the insurance company, which we had three different insurance adjusters who have been pointed to the, to this file, and every time there's a new adjuster, there's another delay, and that person has to get up to speed and find out what's going on in the file, and you start all over again. But what's, what we're here tonight is, it's really a three-step process that we're having to go now that we're ready to reopen, is the first was the planning board advisory opinion, and we've already done that, and as probably is in your packet. But that was unanimous opinion approving this project and approving that this matter resume as a non-conforming use as a commercial restaurant. The second step in this process is what we're here tonight is the zoning board, and that's a miscellaneous appeal in order, basically, to resume, resume a non-conforming use. This is a residential zone along Pine Point Road, even though there's a lot of commercial establishments, but they are non-conforming uses. And because we had to close down for more than a year, we're in front of you here tonight. And the last step in this process, which is slightly different than past projects sometimes, is we now have to go back to do a new site plan review, and that's back before the planning board. And at that point, we've already had meetings about that, and the town staff have been involved. That's scheduled for May twentieth, assuming we're successful tonight. And that's really where the board, the planning board's going to get into the, the issues that the neighbors and others might be interested in, which is the buffering, the lighting, the landscaping, all of those kind, the parking, all of those issues, including runoff, stormwater runoff. All of those are fair game, are actually going to be discussed and going to be an issue before the planning board on the site plan review. So all those things are going to be sort of fair game, and we're expecting that there's going to be many conditions of approval that's going to be coming out of that, that process before the planning board. So I'll run through the law, as you know this law as well as anybody, having to deal with it all the time. But the Scarborough Zoning Ordinance, Section Three F, basically lays out the procedure, and that you must find that the resumption of the non-conforming use will not be substantially different than the prior use. And that's exactly what we're proposing today. We're, we're not expanding the restaurant, we're not making it bigger, smaller, anything. We're just trying to resume what was, what it was like in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, up to the point that we had the catastrophic loss. And then we have the, the second step of this process is that the resumption of the use of the, as a restaurant will meet the standards for special exceptions. And if you allow me, I'll run through those for you. Again, I'll paraphrase some of them rather than read them verbatim, if that's all right.
Actually, we're going to probably ask you to read those into the record in, as you stated anyway. So, okay. What I'd like to do is, I think we've had a chance to read those. We'll ask some questions first, and then we'll give you the opportunity to read those in, but we'll have them read as you've, put them in the application, if that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just, it's a matter of having you formally read them into the record for us to then accept them as, as your statement.
Okay. So do you want me to do that now, or are you waiting for later?
No, we'll do that. What I'd say is, do we have any general questions right now? I'm seeing none. In that case, I'd like to move directly to the, the, the application, the standards for this special exception. And if you, we can go through each one of those, and then you can read in those, those responses.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So we can start with, "The proposal will not create unsanitary or unhealthful conditions by reason of sewage disposal emissions, or air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation."
And again, our response is that the restaurant is, is on public water and sewer, and there'll be no change in the use whatsoever.
Gotcha. Just as a question on that one, given the catastrophic loss that occurred, were there any requirements to change the connection to either sewer mains or water mains or anything like that, or?
No, it's all, all the damages on the first and second floor.
On interior of the building, essentially. Yes, okay.
Yes, it's all interior.
"The proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity."
Yeah, again, we're not proposing any change of the use. There's been no expansion of the business. There's no change of the hours of operation proposed, and it's going to be the same traffic that existed twenty, in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, right up to the point that we had the loss. It's just going to resume what we, what was already there.
And I'll just remind everyone, if you've got questions or comments, and we're at this point, feel free to jump in, but otherwise, we'll continue to walk through these. "The proposed use will not create public safety problems," excuse me, "which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood, or require a substantially greater degree in municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood."
Yeah, and again, because we're not expanding, we're making no changes, as we've been open to the public for the last twenty-five years as Bailey Seafood Restaurant, and there's been absolutely no trouble with public safety or any problems with the police down on that corner.
Understood. D, "The proposed use would not result in sedimentation or erosion, or have an adverse effect on water supplies."
Yeah, and we're not, our proposal, although damage was inside the building, we're not proposing to excavate any, any part of the land unless it's required by the planning board on May twentieth. And all repairs are really interior repairs, not exterior.
"The proposed use will be compatible with existing uses of the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development."
Yeah, we're proposing no changes as to the size of the building, the intensity of the use, the hours of operation. We're not adding any additional seating. We're not doing any, anything like that. And there's no change in proximity to other structures because we're not expanding towards any abutter or any, or anyone in the neighborhood.
And if you confirm, the property is not in a shoreline zone?
That's correct.
"You have the sufficient right, title, and interest in the site of the proposed use to be able to carry out the proposed use."
Yes, April, April Bailey, who's here tonight, she's the applicant, and she's the owner, that she received the property through her, through the estate of her father. And she's been the manager of the restaurant while Stanley was still living and still operating in the restaurant. So, and the restaurant will continue to be operated by her, and like it has been, hopefully for the last twenty-five years.
"And the applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section, comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals pursuant to subsection five of this section."
The, we make no, there's no proposed changes that was going to require any financial big commitment or capital that beyond what insurance is, is covering. Like, we're prepared to cover the fencing and the buffering and all the changes that may be required by the planning board when we get to that point in the site plan review.
"And the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to generation of noise and hours of operations."
Yeah, and again, it's going to be the same operation, no, no change. We're, we're just trying to resume. We're not trying to expand, enlarge, do anything. Just try to go back to where it's been for, until we had the loss to, in twenty-twenty-two. So there'll be no increase of noise and no increase of hours of operation that's proposed.
Got it.
Thank you.
Great. If you can stay up there for just one moment or two more. Any questions or comments or from the board members at this point?
Jerry, I have just one question.
Sure.
Have you completed all of the work necessary now to open, assuming you get approvals, or is there a lot, still it has to be done?
We've, we've completed ninety-five percent or so. And there's, there's things that we know that we have to do for, on the site plan part of this. But after discussion with, with Brian, it's decided that we should wait until after the planning board before we keep going, doing anything further. That's just, you know, we don't want to be seen like we're, we're doing, we're anticipating and doing more in anticipation of, oh, we're gonna, we're gonna get approved. So we're trying to balance that. But ninety-five percent, if not more, of the interior stuff, we're, we hope to open more of the weekend. That's why we've really tried to truncate this as fast as possible.
So you've made all of these investments on a good faith belief that we would accept the fact that you're just continuing to operate in the way you've always operated, and the expectation would be that the appeal would be granted?
Yeah, I, you know, obviously ignorance of the law is no excuse. We've all heard that. But April Bailey did not know that if she didn't resume in one year, that she would have to go through this process. It didn't, only, she, if you saw it in the application, she was actually going to the town and getting food handler licenses for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three. And of course, the clerk's office isn't going to mention that to them, to her, but that's, that's our defense, to be honest with you.
That's a reasonable one.
Christine?
I just wanted to comment that I'm glad you'll be going through the site plan review and that you're amenable to improvements to help the neighbors out.
Absolutely.
I think that's great. Thank you.
And, and I'll remind us all that we're here to, to vet the special, the special exception criteria. There are elements that the planning board will deal with on the site plan that are outside the scope of our review, but, but we're here for just that. So appreciate the background on that, but just to remind everyone of that. With that, I'll ask for, if there's any public commentary at this point from members of the public? Yes, sir?
My name's Dan Lambert.
Could you go over there just so we could hear you?
Sure. My name is Dan Lambert, and I live at one fifty-three Old Blue Point Road, directly across the street from the restaurant. It's unsightly, and everything that she was told to do years ago, she has not done. She's refused to do those things, and it's just frustrating. We hear the tenants, we smell the tobacco smoke, we, we, it's ridiculous what we're seeing. We have garbage, people picking up the dumpsters at six o'clock in the morning. We have bread deliveries at six-thirty in the morning. I've gone out there multiple times to ask them not to come. I was told to call the police. I'd have, and they don't come until after the vendor's gone. And it's just ridiculous. It's frustrating. And as far as, as far as her following through and everything, I don't believe she's gonna. That's basically how I feel, and I've got a lot more to say, but it's just not right, what I got to say. Okay?
Well, thank you for your-
I just need support from you guys. That's all.
Thank you.
She's not going to follow through.
Thank you for your feedback. And, and, and sir, I, one thing I'd say is that there's two forms for this one. One is this one, the other is the planning board.
Okay.
And my sense is your, your, your issues are probably better addressed to the planning board. We have a limited scope for what we can find for findings of fact and law, but the planning board has more scope for putting requirements or for putting the site plan requirements than what we can do as a zoning board. So thank you for your comments. We hear you. We may not be able to incorporate those into our findings here, but there is another form, and I encourage you to make sure you make yourself available for the planning board on the twentieth.
I will be there.
Gotcha. Great. Any other folks here in the room today? Okay, and we had a number of public comments that we're incorporating in the record. Brian, anything else that's come up, or phone calls or the like?
No, all of the, all of the comments in favor are in your packets. There was one that came in by email. If you want, I can read that.
No, it's been incorporated. Yeah, it's in our packets, so.
In the packets.
That's fine. Okay. With that, if there's no more further public comment, I will close the public comment portion of this and then invite discussion among the board before we go through one by one. Any general comments before we start? Dave?
Just to reiterate, our scope of action right now is simply to approve a zoning variance, miscellaneous appeal. The planning board, as you correctly pointed out, Peter, will get into the nitty-gritty nuts and bolts of all the conditions that will be laid upon this, and there'll be an enforcement process that will be established once that happens.
Yep. And David, I'm glad you emphasized that, because a lot of what this involves is the resumption of a, of a practice which has been in place for quite some time. The planning board has the remit to place new restrictions, new requirements, et cetera. We really don't. We don't have that. That's, that's not part of what we do as a ZBA. But we definitely understand and have heard, both here and have seen in comments, some concerns that I'm sure will be highlighted up to the planning board and will be taken up in, on the May twentieth meeting. So, but our legal role is what it is. So we'll go through here. Any other comments from Richard?
I just have one question. Assuming that we grant the appeal, is it time limited? I mean, if they don't do anything for a year, do they have to come back again, or is this a, is this grant a forever they can now take to come back online? Do you know the answer to that question?
As we've seen, because they didn't resume operations, they had to come back and reapply for it. So I just don't know whether that's like one year or two years, or if they miss one year, can they go the following year? Or, I'm not sure how that works, Brian.
And we're granting them a variance from the requirement that they could only take one year. It strikes me that that means that we're granting the variance in perpetuity.
It's really not a variance that we're granting. We're granting approval to resume a non-conforming use. We're granting approval to resume a non-conforming use. It's not really a variance.
Wrong word. But is there a time period for which that's valid?
So any decision of the board is good for six months.
Okay.
With a one-time, six-month extension.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that the applicant knows that in case we run into some issues with contractors or adjusters or anything like that. I know Memorial Day is what you're shooting for, and that's great, but-
There was some discussion, just so the board is aware, there was some discussion during the pre-planning board meeting. We meet with the applicants to discuss their application and any deficiencies and that kind of stuff. And it was discussed, Jeff was part of that, that should the board, planning board, put any conditions that require site changes such as pavement removals, plantings, that kind of stuff, they may very well put a condition that it needs to be done before the next season opens, before their food handler's license expires the next time. That way, there is something to hold their feet to the fire. That food handler's license and liquor license won't be renewed if those changes haven't been completed. And that's only because Memorial Day is rolling up, summer season's coming, it's a bad time to be tearing up pavement and doing plantings when you're trying to deal with traffic that's coming in trying to get food. So we understand that, and there may be some conditions placed on it, but there will be a time limit placed on everything, yes.
Good. Joe, did you have a, okay, got it. Without further comment, then, why don't we go through the special exemption requirements? As we normally do this, I keep shuffling papers in the wrong order. I apologize, everyone. There we go. Why don't we start down, Christine, with A. I'll be concerned with A.
The proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhealthful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to the air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation. And the petitioner says that they're currently connected to public water and sewer. They don't discharge any surface water directly into a protected source. Looks good.
Any comments or questions? If we, could I see a show of hands to agree that this has been met by the applicant? That is unanimous. We'll move on to B. Michelle?
The proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity. So this has not been expanded, this building, and to my knowledge, and the planning board will go through this, but the parking lot won't be changed in any way, so it should be typical of what they've been operating at. So I see that they have met this, that they won't create anything other than what they've been doing traffic-wise.
Great. Any other comments on that? Show of hands that this has been met? All say all agree. C, David?
All right. Put the mic on. The proposed use will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood, or require a substantially greater degree of municipal fire and police protection than existing usage in the neighborhood. First, there's two parts that I'll address here. The first part is, this is a resumption of an existing business. So there will be no difference at all in terms of its impact on the neighborhood. Second point I'll make, even though this is in R2 zone, residential zone, this business predates zoning.
Right.
And if you look up and down Pine Point Road, there are other businesses just like this. So there's really nothing that will be substantially different along Pine Point Road, which is a mixed-use road, granted, than there currently is.
Any other comments or questions? Got it. Do we agree that the applicant has met the conditions of this item? Show of hands is unanimous, yes. The proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on water supplies. The applicant has indicated that there are no substantial changes to runoff or water supplies, hookups, or sewage. And based on the site plan that they presented, it doesn't appear there's any material change. So I would say the applicant has met this requirement. Any discussion? Seeing none, can I see a show of hands to concur? Thank you. Richard, E?
The proposed use will be compatible with existing uses of the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development. And this is similar to item C above, as David described. It's an existing use. We will continue the existing operation, so there'll be no impact relative to history in terms of the neighborhood. So I think they've met this criteria.
Any comments? Seeing none, show of hands to concur with finding. Terrific. Brian, we always ask you to handle this one for us, so it is not in fact in the shoreline zone?
Yes, I can verify it's not in the shoreline zone.
Terrific. Then Joe will give you item G.
The applicant has sufficient right, title, or interest in the site of the proposed use to be able to carry out the proposed use. And a deed has been filed, I assume, Brian, with us?
There's a deed in the packet that conveyed the property to Stanley Bailey. I didn't see anything that noted or identified that had been passed to April, but I assume that is a document that we could be given at some point to prove that if we needed to, but-
Then based on that, I find that the applicant has met the standard.
Any discussion on that one? Seeing none, a show of hands to agree that this is finding great. Michelle, back to you. Or, yeah, Michelle, you mix it up now, we just have a couple left.
Sure. The applicant has the technical and financial ability to meet the standards of this section and comply with any conditions imposed by the Board of Appeals pursuant to subsection five of this section. No changes are proposed, so they didn't, other than, you know, them dealing with insurance and everything for financial ability purposes, but technical, not really any changes, I guess. Sorry, that wasn't very eloquent, but-
It's okay. David, you have a comment?
Yeah, just to add to that, we don't know what the planning board will require. However, the applicant certainly has shown the financial ability to comply with standards. So, you know, I think whatever the planning board decides, they'll be able to comply.
Gotcha. Any other comments? Nope, seeing none. Could I see a show of hands confirming that this is valid? We've met the requirements. I'll take the last one. The proposed use will be compatible with existing uses of the neighborhood with respect to generation of noise and hours of operation. I think this actually directly engages with the one public comment that we heard tonight, which is that there have been some requirements in the past which haven't been addressed. Nevertheless, the enforcement of those prior requirements is beyond the scope of us as a ZBA. So I think we do need to find that this is compatible with existing uses, but I think, Brian, we would want to reflect to the planning committee that we have received, or the planning board, that we have received public comment that indicates that there may be enforcement actions that should be considered in their site plan review, and we would encourage them to incorporate those in their considerations.
Second.
I also second that.
Gotcha.
I think they need to do what they say they're going to do and be good neighbors.
Yep. But again, that's not our scope as a ZBA, but it's something to be considered. So on that one, though, I think we do need to find that this has been met. So if I could see a show of hands on that, and that is unanimous. Okay. So we have gone through that. Thank you very much for the applicant, thank you for the public. We'll now take a motion to, exactly, yes.
Thank you. So moved.
David, a motion to approve. I do have a second.
I'll second that.
Shelley, thank you for a second. Any further discussion or comment from others aboard? If not, then I would ask Doreen to call the roll.
Christine Snow?
Aye.
Michelle Stevenson?
Aye.
David Boett?
Yes.
Peter Freylinger?
Aye.
And Richard Silken.
Yes.
The vote is unanimous. This is, the appeal is approved. Thank you very much, and thank you for your comments. Okay, that's that. The next one, we will move to appeal number 2760, Practical Difficulty Variance Appeal by The Design Company, Inc., on behalf of Sun Porch LLC, Molly Stone, and William Behrens? Behrens, got it. 24 Ashton Streets. So, there we go. We have the design company?
Yes, Walter Wilson from Design Company.
Walter Wilson, thank you very much. Take us through.
Well, I represent the owner of 24 Ashton Street Sun Porch LLC located in Higgins Beach. We are seeking a practical difficulty variance for the construction of a new residence and carriage house to replace the existing buildings located on the property. The requested variance is for relief from the required north side setback of eight feet to a proposed four-foot setback as shown in the site plan. As you know, the Board of Appeals may grant a variance from the dimensional standards when strict application of the provisions of the ordinance would create the practical difficulty as defined in the ordinance. And what I did next is I indicate our interpretation of what the practical difficulty is. It's on the listing, I think, number eight on the conditions to meet. But I thought we should put that first and get that out of the way and discuss that. So the property currently is improved, the main residential building and a separate carriage house located in the rear portion of the lot. The residence is located close to the right property line, the existing setback being one foot six on the north side of the back corner of the house and three foot off the side lane at the front corner. The two structures were built in the year 1900, according to Thomas Gabble. To the south side of the resident, an existing paved driveway from the house to the property line is located. The sewer line serving the house and extending to the rear carriage house is also located in this driveway. The sewer line is very close to the house wall and is presumed to be located in ledge as is evidence of ledge under the house and around the house. The town water line service is also located in the driveway. The existing house does not have a conventional foundation but is supported by a posting system. This is typical with a cottage-style building of this period. The first floor is elevated approximately five feet above the driveway. To renovate this building and install a concrete foundation would be far more expensive for the owner, and the building's size and shape would not meet the needs of a 2024 structure. The owner desires to build a new structure and carriage house that meets the Higgins Beach zoning district and the character code requirements of the area. They would also like the new home to be located where the existing building now stands in order to protect the driveway and sewer lines. The zoning for Higgins Beach permits a two-and-a-half-story, 28-foot wide by 38-foot deep house. And if you're familiar with the zoning character zones of Higgins Beach, it's different than the other zones where it's more particular as to size of buildings and so forth. We are proposing a building that's 28-foot wide and 32-foot 8 inches in depth. The current building is 29 feet wide. The new house would be located four feet from the right property line. The new house would have a concrete foundation, and the proposed house and carriage house will satisfy the Higgins Beach character ordinance except for the north side setback dimension of eight feet required by the main house. The proposed location with a four-foot setback reduces the existing encroachment on the property. The proposed location allows the south side of the new building to be located along the edge of the driveway. A significant economic injury to the applicant would be added to the construction costs if the proposed house was recited to meet the eight-foot sideline setback. The relocation would mean the existing driveway and sewer line would need to be reconstructed. The driveway would be less in width, and the entry from Ashton Street would need to be reconstructed also. The placement of the proposed house four feet from the south to the south would mean that the sewer line location would need to be redone from the carriage house to Ashton Street through the on-site ledge areas. This would be approximately 70 foot long and may need a new tie-in to Ashton Street, which is on the opposite side of the street. In order to maintain the driveway sewer line and locations to meet the eight-foot setback, the proposed house would need to be reduced to 24 feet wide. However, the Higgins Beach Zone states that a house 28-foot wide is permitted. Reducing a building width would result in a significant economic injury to the applicant that could be avoided by granting of the requested variance. Therefore, we contend that a practical difficulty exists because the existing driveway and sewer line locations and a significant economic injury would result to the applicant if a four-foot sideline setback variance was not provided. It should also be noted by the board that a roof bump-up that could be identified as a dormer is required on the north side of the building to allow headroom for a stairway to the upper half story. The structural feature is designed so the stairway is able to comply with the dimensional requirements of the building code. The exterior wall is a vertical extension of the wall below it and is the width of the stairway. It does not act as like a room dormer, but does provide headroom for the stairway. The applicant desires that the board approves this feature as part of the required four-foot variance application. Now, before I introduce Paul Letty to address to the board and explain the economic injuries that the applicant could see if a variance is not granted, I would like to explain the considerations and restrictions and restraints that resulted in the application that is being presented tonight. First, the rear yard setback in the district is 30 feet. Our proposal will be for a house that is about, is 32-foot 8 inches in depth and would have a rear yard setback of over 46 feet. This is to accommodate an existing rear yard corridor view from the neighbor's house located to the north of this project. The applicant does not want to block the neighbor's view. This consideration determined the depth of the proposed house to be 32-foot 8 inches. We could have gone 38-foot with the ordinance, but we want to keep this corridor view open. I actually did the design work on that budding house, and we situated it so the back of the house could have a view down through this corridor to the ocean. And the owners do not want to block that view. The proposed house is 28 feet wide and replaces the current 29-foot structure. By placing the new house parallel and four foot from the side property line, the existing encroachment becomes less. This location allows the entrance to the driveway from Ashton Street to remain. Without the granting of a practical difficulty variance, a new sewer line would need to be installed, and a driveway entrance from Ashton Street would need to be reconstructed. The third, the front yard is elevated from the driveway surface and is separated by a retaining wall. A granting of the requested variance would allow this feature to remain. The finished grating and the retaining wall would need to have some work done to it because of the wider front porch and the location of the stairs. If a variance is not granted and the house was to have it to be eight feet from the sideline, the front yard would need to be extended to the east, which would be part of the entrance reconstruction. The fourth thing I want to bring up is Brian Longstaff suggested that a building 24-foot by 38-foot could be built to avoid a variance. The 38-foot depth would mean that the house would have to be set back further into the rear yard setback and would nearly block all views from that corridor from the next-door neighbor. So that's why we ended up with a house 32-foot 8 inches. I submit that the 28-foot wide house that is proposed and the location proposed warrants a variance because, one, it reduces the side yard encroachment from the existing one-and-a-half feet to a four-foot setback. The existing sewer line and driveway are a practical difficulty that restricts the proposed house from meeting the eight-foot setback requirement. proposed house from meeting the eight-foot setback requirement. The need to reconstruct the driveway entrance and front yard would be avoided. The ordinance allows a twenty-eight-foot house to be located on the property. A strict application of dimensional standards would both preclude a use of the property that is permitted in the zone and would result in a significant economic injury to the applicant. So those are the reasons I have of why we have a practical difficulty. The practical difficulty pretty much dictates where the house and the property should be, which is where the existing house is now. And in doing so, we still reduce the encroachment that the existing house has on the sideline. So at this time, I'll let Paul Letty come up and explain some of the economic...
Before you do that, yeah, before you do that, I'd like to have the, give the, um, board an opportunity to ask questions. So, Mr. Borg?
Yes. You mentioned, um, a twenty-four wide by thirty-eight, uh, structure as was suggested for us to consider. Would you encroach on the rear setback?
Well, yeah, because we're proposing a thirty-two-foot front-to-back building.
What is the rear setback, please?
What's that?
How, what, what would be the encroachment on the rear setback?
We would encroach into the rear setback more.
Yeah, how many feet?
If we made it thirty-eight feet.
Yeah, but how, how much?
Well, it'd be another six feet, and that would pretty much block that corridor view that the next-door neighbor has.
Views are not a criteria for us to consider. All right, so I just want to make that clear. Although it's certainly nice to be neighborly and, you know, not block somebody's view, it's not something that we take into consideration. My only question really regarding the, you're extending the building back, is how far into that setback would you be encroaching by making it to thirty-eight feet?
In the actual building setback, we wouldn't be encroaching into that at all.
Okay, so that would not be an issue, but I thought I heard you say it would be an issue if it were thirty-eight feet.
As far as the ordinances go, it wouldn't be an issue, no.
All right.
It's one of the considerations on the project that we took in consideration when, when locating the building.
Okay, well, all right, I understand that, but again, it's not something that, we don't consider views in making decisions, although it's, it's certainly nice and neighborly to do so, but that's really not something that we, it's not something that's part of how we make decisions. I do have a few other questions, so if you don't mind. On the practical difficulty explained, you just say that you're presuming that, um, there is ledge, okay?
Yes.
Where you would have to extend the sewer line?
Yes, there's ledge, ledge in the rear of the property, under the building, and assumed...
Well, you used the word presume.
Assumed.
So, does that mean that you've, you've found it or not?
Well, it's under the pavement, so we assume that the ledge is there because it's present on eighty percent of the property.
Okay, all right, so you're, you're speculating it probably is because most of it is ledge?
Assuming, yes, yes.
Yeah, okay, so it could be. Other question. The bump-up?
Yes.
Uh, for, for the, you know, resembling a dormer, okay? Is, is there any other way to put a stairwell in, you know, without having to do that?
To get headroom on the, where the stairway is located, we need the bump-up to get up through the...
No, could the stairway, you, remember, you're building a new building, a new structure. Could the stairwell be located somewhere else in the house so that you wouldn't have that problem to resolve?
It's possible that it could be, but it would mess up all the floor plans for three stories.
Okay, so from your perspective as an architect, you're saying that that's not advisable?
Not advisable because it would be detrimental to the floor plans to do that.
All right, that's why, that's why.
Um, are there other questions? I've got a couple of comments I wanted to make. First off, I, I want to critique the applicant and its representative. We didn't receive a lot of material at the, for the timely, um, receipt of our, of the application. Specifically, the cost estimates for, um, the, the, the driveway, the, um, uh, foundation scope for a new building of the existing house. And frankly, in, in terms of demonstrating practical economic difficulty, I still don't see real any, really any evidence. I see some cost estimates, but I don't see, uh, the, the value difference. And frankly, we're not here to help you maximize the value of the property. We're here to approve variances that make sense with a reasonable, um, lack of economic loss. We still don't have those materials here. And I understand there will be someone else coming up to talk about it, but the materials presented don't back it up. So you're going to have to have a very convincing rhetorical argument because your numbers are failing. And then on that one, I, I'd say specifically, um, I don't see how a twenty-four-foot home on Ashton Street in Higgins Beach, designed appropriately without requiring a variance, wouldn't provide an enormously attractive economic return to the applicant, um, for, versus the continuing occupation of the existing house. So, we, 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 practical difficulty variances, again, are not designed to, to maximum, to allow you to maximize the economic value of a property. They're designed to allow you to use the property, given the restrictions of the property, and still have, enjoy a commensurate return or a commensurate economic value. So I've heard what you've had to say, but I don't see, I, I don't see an argument here yet.
So... I, I actually do.
Uh, this, this is our findings of facts. These aren't...
We haven't got to them yet.
We, we, we are going to get to them. I'm saying, and again, I know you're going to bring somebody else up, um, I'm, I'm giving you a chance now to know that at least the chairman of this zoning board sees of, an enormous paucity of evidence that would allow us to move forward. So, um, with that in mind, if you'd like to bring up your next person, I'd be happy to hear, hear from them.
I'm going to read from my narrative. I did make copies.
If anybody wants copies of this narrative, is that something that you would want me to pass out right now? I think we've got, yeah. I, I have a, a newer, well, a narrative that... If you have a new one, then yeah, please, yeah.
Well, technically, aren't we not supposed to?
Yeah, we can, yeah, exactly. Um, yeah, and, and we'll have it written in the record and all the rest, so yeah, we, we can definitely do that, yeah, yeah. If you, if you skipped some sections that had a lot of ands and ons, that would be great.
I'll do my best, I'll do my very best.
No worries, thanks a lot.
And if you, if you see me flatter, please stop.
You got it.
Well, there's no pressure on that.
Okay, Paul Letty, Letty Bill Design. Glasses. Uh, the applicant, Bill Behrens and Molly Stone, own a home on twenty-four Ashton Street in Scarborough. They reached out to my company, Letty Bill Design, to renovate or reconstruct their home on Higgins Beach, which includes a main house, cottage, and a carriage house. As we began our budget analysis, it became evident that in order for us to comply with the current setback requirements, we would have to relocate the existing sewer line that serves both the carriage house and the main house. Upon further investigation, we realized that this would add considerable cost to the already high cost of construction. As we now need to remove the existing driveway and relocate the sewer line at least eight to ten feet away from where it is now. The lot has exposed ledge. We do not have an estimate to drill and blast this ledge, as it may prove to be disruptive to the adjacent homes and add upwards of fifty thousand dollars to remove, but we do have an estimate from my excavating contractor to relocate the sewer line, not including blasting. The estimate includes opening up Ashton Street to install a su, a new sewer connection as the existing sewer in the street runs downhill towards Bayview, and our new location would enter the city sewer line downhill of the current sewer connection. Knowing these steps would add thirty to eighty thousand dollars to the project budget, we, uh, explored renovating the existing cottage, but quickly determined that the additional cost to install a foundation under an existing cottage would add over a hundred thousand dollars to the project without even renovating the cottage. And in my experience, to continue estimating the project as a renovation would add upwards of two hundred thousand dollars in comparison to building a new home. In addition to the potential ledge removal for relocating the water line, I would have to reconfigure the driveway entrance from Ashton Street and reshape and repave the driveway. This result is an additional cost not yet provided. My advice to the owner was then to propose to reduce the existing width of the current cottage from twenty-nine feet to the allowed twenty-eight feet, and to reposition the structure to be parallel to the property line, which would reposition the new structure an additional two-and-a-half feet away from the line that it currently exists. This would allow us to construct a new code-compliant, energy-efficient home without relocating the existing sewer line, therefore eliminating the need to reconnect in the street and drill and blast. We discussed the idea of building a narrower and longer house to comply with the current setbacks, but we would then be interfering with the neighbor's view corridor, blocking the natural light and they, that they currently, uh, enjoy. Plus, the design would make it seem now like we have two carriage homes and not a main house with a carriage house. As reluctant as we are to go through this variance process, and we are, we realize that this is why this option exists, and our option, uh, I'm sorry, and our request fits the criteria of why a variance should ever be granted. Our hope is that the board will understand that our request is well-thought-out, has merit, and is precisely why this process is available. Our intent is to build a new attractive home that fits back on the site with the least amount of change and disruption to the character of the neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration, and I will now try to answer as best I can, uh, Peter, any of your concerns with the clause. We'll start with David here.
Okay. You, you refer to allow twenty-eight feet. That's a Higgins Beach requirement, is that correct?
Uh, character code allows twenty-eight feet, yes.
To code?
To the current, uh, character code.
For Higgins Beach, correct?
Correct.
Now, is, is that not a maximum width?
It is a maximum.
So that doesn't have to go to the maximum?
No, we could reduce it.
To twenty-four?
Yes.
But?
Well, I, I think when we get into the design and you look at a twenty-four-foot-wide building, uh, and then, you know, the square footage reduces, of course, and then it looks like we have two carriage houses on the property.
Well, all right, so to the square footage comparison between twenty-four by thirty-eight compared to what you're proposing, it's an insignificant difference. It's only like three square, uh, is that correct, Brian? How many square feet was that, the, the delta between the proposed versus what the you were, you were suggesting?
We do have three stories, David, so whatever...
So triple it.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's, it's not insignificant.
About ten square feet total, about ten square feet total?
Uh, no, no. It's about a, it's about a fourteen percent reduction in square footage.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, all, all I calculated was the four...
Fourteen percent, so...
Times three?
No, 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 it's, so...
He did the times.
Yeah, it's, yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you.
Okay, got it. All right, so, all right, I, I just wanted to, you know, just make, make sure that, the way I understood what you were saying is...
Sure.
That you were allowed twenty-eight feet now, but you're not, because, you know, you're the, because of the requirements...
Well, we're twenty-nine feet currently.
Yeah.
And we could renovate the house...
Yeah.
In its, in its current...
You could, but to replace the house...
Right.
You have to come before us to get a, a variance.
Right.
And we have to consider setbacks.
Correct.
Okay, which, what, what you're proposing is, doesn't comply with the setback requirement.
It doesn't, we're not, we're not able to comply with the setback requirement because there is a condition on, on the site, up and down the street, because I've built, uh, on that street before, and we have, uh, you know, poured up against ledge, not needing to, uh, uh, remove ledge for the sewer, but needing to pin to ledge. I, I know you asked Walter, I think, Peter, you asked Walter, that we're proposing or supposing there's ledge. You can actually stand on the edge of the pavement where there's ledge, and, and the pavement's broken up around that piece of ledge, and then you could just go underneath the underpinnings of the house and see ledge everywhere. So we, we know that where the, uh, existing sewer line is, which is right up against the edge of the house, would have to move over, uh, minimum, excuse me, minimum of eight feet, probably ten feet, so now we're right in the middle of the driveway. So in order to meet the code requirements and, and even design a twenty-four-foot would, would, would have us get into blasting and removing ledge.
Okay, we circles back to where you started, which is the cost.
Right.
Okay, so that's what is being, that, that's what's being identified...
Right.
As the hardship.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm, I'm here to talk to you as a builder from cost, not necessarily, uh, design, but, but, um, yeah, we, we started, you know, I walked through it with my, I brought my son Ryan here with me, he's, you know, uh, part of the operation with Letty Bill Design. We've walked over it with, uh, Maeda Excavating. With our, with our experience building down there, uh, it's, it's going to be very, very difficult to, uh, move that house over into the existing driveway where there's ledge everywhere. It's going to, it's going to force us to remove ledge, and of course, get into repaving the driveway, re, re, uh, configuring the entrance from Ashton Street. And then, of course, we have to, we have to reconnect the sewer, uh, in the street, on the other side of the street, because the sewer, as you know, runs from the top of the street down towards Bayview. And, you know, the old saying, sewage runs downhill, something like that. And, um...
Got it.
We would need to then, you know, open up the street to relocate and re-hook up the sewer, uh, you know, e- eight or ten feet away.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Letty, for explaining all that.
Other, other, Michelle.
So your ledge is...
Sorry, Christine.
Your ledge issue, it's not going to be an issue putting in a foundation?
It's not an issue for the foundation because, as I said, we, we've done it before, right down the street, about four houses down. When we get to the ledge, I can clean it all off, and I can pin my footings and foundation to the ledge, it, it's okay. We don't expect to get headroom, you know, we, yeah, we can pin to the ledge for the foundation, but for us to get water and sewer, of course, we have to get at least five feet down, and, and that's a whole other smoke.
I have a question. Is there something in particular that you found that was wrong with, or wrong with the current structure other than ledge? Like, does it have mold? Is it, is it deteriorating in some way?
It's deteriorating in every way. Uh, Shirley, sorry, it's, uh, yeah, it, it's, it's in desperate need of, of at least a renovation. I mean, the windows are, you know, old, the, the boards are rotting, the, the floor systems are subpar, they're like some two-by-sixes, in some places, two-by-fours, it's just...
Pictures would have been nice of this property to show that just for future, um...
Understood, yeah.
Future, uh...
Yeah, no, I can understand that.
Uh, because it's helping us, we need to understand, you know, why you're doing this, what you're...
It's a nineteen twenties cottage that was built.
That would be nice to know, too.
Yeah, it's a nineteen ninety's cottage.
We don't drive by any of these places, we don't know, we're, we can't, so like, we don't, we're not familiar, you have to give us that information.
Yeah, exactly.
So I'm trying to figure out why, you know, could they, could you do like a simple renovation, but it sounds like everything is...
It's currently not livable in the, in the winter time.
Okay, that is a great word to use, too, for us.
Yeah, thank you. And, and Paul, that's actually, Paul, I'm going to give you a little bit of a tongue-lashing here. We've seen you before here before, you've done great work, and, and we, we, we know what your, what your construction quality is. The quality of the application just doesn't reflect what I would have expected to come from, from, from your organization. We didn't have the, the, the...
We didn't have the data on the existing house to understand what that looks like. I've got some more concerns about sort of the design features of this, but, and the fact that we got a lot of this information today or within the last five or six business days puts us as a zoning board in a difficult position. And a lot of this, this really could be a lot easier, and I know, given the quality of your, you'll come to us in the future on these sorts of things, and you've done other work in Higgins Beach, so, and Higgins Beach always seems to come before us. So I just, we're disappointed as a board at the timing and the quality of the submission on this one. So now, we will find facts and the rest based on what we've got.
Sure.
And what we've heard, but, but it's harder for us to find facts that weigh in favor of an applicant when we don't have them available.
Understood, and I apologize for not making this available. I know Walter made the application. There might have been a little bit of miscommunication along the way, like what was necessary. I think Walter was pretty confident that this part of the presentation was better served in person at the meeting. And subsequently, I spoke to Brian a week or two ago, and he said, ah, that might have been best included in, so we missed that opportunity, and I apologize.
Yep, so, I've got a couple of other questions. First off, if I do the math, and you run the house back thirty-eight feet instead of the thirty-two, eight that you've got in the diagram, and then reduces to twenty-four, you actually have equivalent plus or minus zero square footage difference.
That's correct.
And as I understand it, because, again, you can pin a foundation to the ledge, there's really not, I want to say material, you'd have to do the rest of it and all the rest, but the cost differential of going twenty-four by thirty-eight versus twenty-eight by thirty-two, eight, I don't think would be material in terms of that. There'd be, there'd be a redesign, et cetera, but I understand there'd be some cost, but, and so the only thing that I find that's impeding that from being a better decision here is the view and that.
The view is one thing, the view and the light for the next door neighbor, but we're kind of on, we're trying to operate under this character code, which has like a main cottage and then a carriage house. And from the street, we're looking at now, we would be looking at what I would think is two carriage houses, and it would not, if you drive up and down the street, you drive all around the neighborhood, that's not really the character of the neighborhood. And I don't think it's the intention of the character code. So this is why we're concerned that if we build the main house the same size as, let's say, the carriage house, that we look like we have two carriage houses on the property and not the, not the traditional cottage with the carriage house.
Though you could build the carriage house smaller if you don't want it to appear that way, just adding that in.
Correct, now we're just asked to build everything smaller.
Well, or, or, or we're not, actually, because we're.
We don't have to build the carriage house smaller.
We're keeping our, there might be a footprint adjustment, and appreciate that, and that would be a different variance request, but, but we're not necessarily saying everything's smaller. And the other thing is, with due respect, Paul, you're a great, you've designed some great properties.
Thank you.
And I would, I would, I would be surprised that you would not take up the challenge of designing the property.
We, I'm sure we could meet that challenge, it's just, you know, we do like the big front, traditional front porch entrance that's, right now, I think there's, if you drive by, which I understand that, you know, pictures would have been helpful, I think there's like ten rocking chairs on the front porch, you know, it's a place where the neighbors, as they walk up and down, stop, you know, come onto the lawn, sit on the big front steps, we're trying to keep that traditional cottage look, and, yeah, we could, I mean, we could design a really cool modern house there if I had my druthers, I might want to do that, but that's, that wouldn't fit into the character code.
No, no, but if I think about Higgins Beach and what the character code has been to preserve, it's not only this, it's also the more narrow houses, the more, the same era.
Tall, thin houses.
Taller, thin houses, exactly, so it's, that, that design issue is not a driven, is forced upon you by the Higgins Beach design code. So you've got the view thing, we are not really able to take that into account, and, and again, I'm not seeing the economic.
Mr. Chair, I wanted to stop you on the, the issue about the, you know, the view shed.
Yeah.
It strikes me that we are able to take that into account, and I believe our second criteria is that we don't influence the market value of a budding properties. And so if.
If we feel that, yeah, fair point.
But it's not a question of whether I feel it or not, it's a question of whether we can take the effect on a budding properties into consideration, and I think we have to take the effect of a budding properties into consideration under the criteria.
I think, though, we have to do that under evidence supplied by the applicant, so we don't, other than a statement that it likely would.
Well, I mean, you know, that's where all we're getting, a statement that they likely would or that it's going to cost this amount, I mean, that, what else, we're not doing independent evaluation.
No, no, we don't.
The record is what the applicant gives us.
We've often seen from other applicants, though, an estimate of the impact of the value on other, on surrounding homes. And we've seen surrounding homeowners come through and say, don't do this because it will affect my property value, or you can do this because it won't affect.
We would never expect a homeowner to come in and say, to the hearing, because they've already made the adjustment not to affect them. If they had made the adjustment and made it thirty-eight feet deep, perhaps that owner would be in front of us saying, don't let them build it, it's going to block my view.
But again, we don't have.
You can't expect them to provide us information about the counter.
We don't have evidence on either side.
Just to add to this conversation, guys, we do know the neighbor very well, Mark, and he has been a part of this process and is in consideration of this project, process and what we're proposing, he's on board with it. We never proposed to him.
He sent an email to the board.
Oh, he did, okay, so we never proposed to him that, hey, we have this, you know, this is what we'd like to do so that we can preserve your light into your house, and as Walter said, he designed that house right next door. So, you know, we're, we, yes, I know that it's not a big consideration to be like a good neighbor, but it's kind of hard for us not to just be that way anyway, I mean.
Well, I think, first of all, I'll put a cap on my comments at this point. Joe, do you, do you want to?
Sure, just, we do have a letter from Mark Westervelt.
Yes, Mark.
Whose view, if, based on what you're saying, would be affected.
Yeah, you can see it on the site plan, but yes.
So would Mark write this letter if it were thirty-eight feet deep?
I don't know.
We don't know.
Exactly.
We don't know. And, and to what degree is the view affected? A pitcher from the backyard looking out across and saying, he loses or she loses.
He'd be looking at our building.
Right, I mean, so, and, and, you know, just a straightforward reading of, I've lost it, the criteria.
But we don't have any of that evidence of any pictures of what.
Understood, but the straightforward reading of the criteria says value of the property as well.
Peter?
Christine.
So are we looking at an undeveloped petition here, and it should be tabled, and maybe they come back? Brian, do you have any suggestions here?
I would never weigh in on that, that's your decision.
Yes, David.
Great, okay, so regarding assessed values, I'm on the board with assessment review, and I work with Nick Clidier carefully on this. I know we're going through a eval right now, but it seems to me that assessed values are based on square footage primarily, not on the width of the, the front of the property. And as I look at your proposal here, this, you know, calls for a twenty-eight foot frontage, okay? And compare that to a twenty-four foot, all right, that's a reduction of four feet. To me, that would be like one rocking chair. It's no big deal, okay? And by looking at the, you know, going to twenty-four, extending it to thirty-eight, that's practically identical square footage.
There's no argument there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so.
The realization of that is that we're blocking, we're.
No, I understand blocking the view, and I understand that, that, you know, you've gone this far, involved the neighbor, the right thing to do, okay? But we've got to look at it in terms of.
Understood.
The law, unfortunately, you know, sometimes we have to make decisions that are difficult. But, you know, right now, I'm looking at this and I'm saying that making the changes that would be an alternative, without requiring a setback variance, okay, would actually, wouldn't have any material effect on the valuation of the property. Mr. Chair.
Actually, let me just say, David, are you done? Okay, got it, sorry.
The width of the porch is one thing, and you're right, it's one rocking chair. Now we go in the front door, and we go up to the second floor, and we have two bedrooms side by side, if we take four feet away from those bedrooms, they are no longer functional bedrooms.
That's a hallway.
That's a hallway.
That's a hallway that serves those, so, yeah.
So now, now we're in, on the second floor, we've lost a bedroom, and the other bedroom is a little bigger, but we've lost it. And we, and the size of the bathroom is four feet deeper, less, and so now we've lost a shower. So yes, the front porch is a rocking chair, but inside the building, losing four feet is significant in terms of how you design the inside of a building.
Richard, I think you got to remember, though, what we're saying is that we could maintain square footage by reducing by four feet and extending back by almost six feet.
That doesn't get you anything, though, in terms of the width.
No, I know, but it gives you a different.
Whether you can or you can't, I mean, that's an architectural decision, and they could design something to be that size. However, I think it's important to recognize that when you do that, you've changed the character of the inside of the building significantly. My house, I mean, I know you can do this, my house is twenty feet wide, right? What that means is it can only be one room deep. I can't have two rooms deep. If I had twenty-eight feet, I could have two rooms deep, and it would change the entire layout of the house. Now, and that has significant economic value in terms of how you end up designing and what you're able to accomplish. So we're really weighing here, it seems to me, is we've accepted the fact that we're not going to renovate the existing house. That's a hundred thousand dollar foundation plus the renovation costs that they've mentioned to us, so that's not an option. Tear it down. Now the question is, do we tear it down and do we build a house that's twenty-four feet wide or twenty-eight feet wide? If we do the twenty-eight feet wide, we can build a standard kind of a house that has parallel side-by-side bedrooms, side-by-side baths, closets and kitchens and so forth in the house. If we go to twenty-four feet, we're limited in terms of our ability to do that, and the interior design suffers.
I think the exterior design suffers, too.
That's another issue, so the question here is, is that enough to create a practical difficulty? Given the fact that we are going from a one-foot side setback to a four-foot side setback, so we're actually enhancing the setback, is it worth that four feet to make that kind of a trade-off inside? And ultimately, that's what we're all going to have to decide. I think we have enough information to make the decision, I don't think we need to table this, I think we can vote on it.
Yeah, actually, that's.
And just move it along and decide how we're going to proceed.
Agreed, and I think we're probably seeing how our views are evolving here, but I think, Richard, your point is probably the pertinent one. Do we see a need to table and look for a more developed application, or do we have enough to decide? So let me, can I ask that informally, or do I need to vote on that? Or if there's no motion to table, do I need to not?
If nobody's made a motion.
So, one second on that one, because we'll get to public comment in just a moment, and you guys will be public, you guys are the applicants, aren't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, then, your public comment? Hold on one second, then, I'd like to get the applicants first, and we'll have the applicants finish that, then I'd like a brief discussion to see if there's a tabling motion or none, and then if there's none, we'll go to the public comment, and if that's okay? Terrific. Okay, so if I could ask the applicants, and again, stand at the podium there so that you can be heard.
Mr. Chair, I just want to remind you, you haven't gone through the finding of fact.
We're not yet ready to do that yet.
But you're going to public comment before you read the response?
No, I'm not, I'm going to the applicant's.
Oh, they're going to, okay, I see what you're doing, okay.
Hi, good evening, my name is Bill Behrens, my wife Molly Stone is here. Sun Porch LLC is a two-person partnership that we created in order to own this property to keep the finances identifiable. We still have the option to renovate the building. It's twenty-nine feet wide, it's one foot from the, from the sideline. It would cost us more money, but we still have that option, that can't, that can't be taken away from us in a sense. If we can build new, our intention is to put the electrical, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Higgins Beach, but it's a mare's nest of overhead wires, we'd like to put all of the electrical service to these two houses underground, and we'd like to provide to our downhill neighbors, not our uphill neighbors, the, provide them the underground electric service so they also don't have wires hanging across the street. The poles are on the opposite side of the street, and all the wires hang across. So we'd like to do that under a new construction scenario. It cleans up the street, it improves the neighborhood, and we'd like to build a new house that maintains the character of the, of the district, but is a building that will last and, and be energy efficient and dependable and serviceable and of high economic value for the next hundred years. But we can renovate the existing cottage, and we can maintain our proximity to the side setback. If you walk along Ashton Street in that, in that neighborhood, you'll find all the houses are crowded against their right sidelines, including the neighbor's house, Mark's house, which was built only in 2015, that's three feet from his north property line. So the rhythm of the street is already with the houses to the north side and the driveways to the south side. We'd kind of like to keep that rhythm of the street going, we don't want to slide into the driveway, incur the ledge and all the other issues that, that Paul has identified. But we also like the backyard of the property. This is one of those properties that has a reasonable backyard on it, that's what creates the viewscape for Mark's house, is that he can look down the backyards down to the ocean, and so we have separation between the two cottages. A lot of them are crowded right up tight to each other, this property happens to be nicely separated. If we renovate the existing buildings, we can maintain that. The back carriage house is less than one foot from the lot lines, both sides. The setback on side and rear on a carriage house is three feet. If we are able to build new, we will move it away from the lines by roughly two feet, which reduces our yard size, but doesn't really have a, doesn't create a hardship on anybody else. It's really the main house that's the issue, and the main house in terms of economic value, I think, is of higher value to us as property owners, therefore higher value to the town as, as a piece of property in the town. If it's, as Mr. Silkman said, Dr. Silkman said, excuse me, is a standard house, not, not a squeezed house, but a standard house. This, this is the Spurwink Cottage, it's been there since at least 1910, possibly 1900. It has had a lot of rocking chairs across the front porch for generations, and we would like to maintain that nice wide front porch to maintain the character of the neighborhood. We can do that simply by renovating the existing, leave it one foot, six inches from the property line, maintain our backyard, maintain Mark's viewscape, we can do that. Yes, it's more expensive to us, but honestly, I think it would be of higher value than building the twenty-four foot wide house.
I have a comment and a question. One, I do really like that you guys took into consideration your neighbor, because I think that's really nice. But two, my question was, if you're going to bury your lines and there's all this ledge, I don't know anything about buried lines, and that might be, I, this is the first I've heard about the buried lines, why can't you do anything with the sewers?
Sure, go ahead.
I just don't know, I need you to educate me on it.
So, so water and sewer have to go deeper than power in a conduit? Very simple answer, but it's a good, it's a good question.
And they're not also going across the lot, they're going.
And, and they're not also going across the lot, they're going right to the fronts of each lot, so...
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Behrens. Just a follow-up here. So you, you said that you could keep the existing property and renovate it, you'd be perfectly happy with that, and at the same time, you said that it would be cheaper to, you know, proceed with what is being proposed by the, by the architect and the contractor. You could do it either way, okay? The question before the board was really, do you want to proceed or not? You know, so we were asking your opinion, asked, do you want to go forward with this request, or do you want to say, no, let's just table it, whatever? So, do you have an opinion on that, that you'd like to express, or do you like to dispense on it?
It's a great question. I don't understand the process well enough to give a good answer.
Okay, thank you, that's a good answer. I like it.
Any other questions on the applicant? If not, then we'll go to, and read in the applicant's, um, uh, statement of the findings of conditions, and then we'll move to public comment.
Could I say one thing to clarify something which I think's important? And that is about a practical difficulty. There's two things, basically. One is that without the variance, you can't, you can't, uh, use the property, and the other one is, it causes excessive cost to the injury to the applicant. Now, if we didn't have what I call the practical difficulty, you're already in the ground and existing there, which causes us to put the house to, to the location it's in now, if we didn't have that in the ground, we could take a 24-foot, 28-foot wide house and move it to the center of the lot. That would be the use that we'd be allowed to do. But because we have a practical difficulty with an excess, excessive extra cost to work around, the same 28-foot house, we want to put where we want to put it. So the practical difficulty expense is avoided by leaving the existing conditions on the property where they are, and build the new house. And the new house will have more of a setback than the existing house. So, with a practical difficulty, we can build a 28-foot house, without the practical difficulty in place, we can build a 28-foot house on that lot. But with it, you're trying to say, we have to build a smaller house because we have a practical difficulty. And I'm saying that the reasons for variances are not put there never to use, they're to use when the, when the occasions arise, where, in this case, the practical difficulty causes the use of an existing, of a, of a new house which meets the width that can be built at Higgins Beach to be made smaller. That even enhances the practical difficulty, because now you're penalizing the house size on the fact that the practical difficulty is there. And the practical difficulty variance is supposed to relieve the applicant of excessive cost in building the house on the property.
Are we done?
Yes, I am.
Okay, then, uh, let's move into the reading of the finding conditions.
Okay, Mr. Williams. Besides practical difficulty, uh... I'd just like to just ask one particular question. Is there anything unique about this particular lot compared to all the other lots in the neighborhood?
The actual boundary lines, there's not much difference. But what it is, what it does, it has infrastructure on the property that's existing, and, and, limits what we can do as far as the location of the lot, unless we go to a very additional expense to get around the existing conditions.
Okay.
And that in itself is a practical difficulty.
So indirectly, you know, it does have bearing on practical difficulty. The fact that you have the existing infrastructure underground, you know, the sewer line specifically, which would cost a lot of money to, to relocate, and, and of course, to repaint the driveway. That's, that's part of that. That makes, that makes this situation, you know, which is, you know, is unique, is something that's unique to this particular lot because of what's existing there right now. Is that true?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. That's all I had.
That's a good segue into number one. The need for variances due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions of the neighborhood.
The proposed house to be 28 feet wide, 32 eight inches deep, which is within the size permitted to Higgins Beach zoning. This building is to be located in the area of the existing building. The location results in a need of a four-foot side yard variance to the north sideline because of the practical difficulty as explained above.
Number two, the granting of a variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or fair market value of the abutting properties.
The proposed destruction of the main house and the new carriage house are designed to meet the requirements of Higgins, Higgins Beach character ordinance, and therefore will not result in an unreasonably detrimental effect on the use of market value of abutting properties.
Number three, the practical difficulty is not the result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner.
The location of the existing house, carriage house, driveway and sewer line was done prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinances. The ordinances are the reason that a practical difficulty now exists.
Number four, no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except a variance.
The granting of a requested four-foot side yard variance request would avoid the practical difficulty as defined above. This would allow the applicant a use of the property which is permitted in the zone, and would not result in a significant economic injury to the owner. There is no other feasible alternative for reasons stated above.
Number five, the granting of variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties.
Proposed side yard setback on the right, or the north side of the property is proposed to be four feet. The existing building is set back one foot, six inches to three feet from the same property line. The proposed setback will reduce the current encroachment. Many of the homes located in the section of Ashton Street are located very close to the property sidelines of their properties.
Number six, the granting of a variance will not have an unnecessarily, excuse me, an unreasonably adverse effect on the natural environment.
No.
The property is not located in whole or in part within a shoreline area, as defined in 38 MRS, MRSA 435, or a flood hazard zone, as defined in the Town and Scarborough Flood Plan Management.
No.
And, gotcha. There is the eighth item, which I believe, if, you've got a long narrative here, rather than asking to read that entire narrative, do you mind if we just have that included as your response to number eight?
Yeah, that's the practical difficulty explanation that I referred to when I started.
That's right. Don't want to make you read that paragraph.
Same thing.
Okay, gotcha, we'll accept that as a response to number eight. So thank you very much.
Yeah, I will, I will say one more thing about the location proposed. If you look at the house to the left, or the, towards the ocean side, that house is right up on the property line, okay? And on the house to the north, Mark's house, he's right, I think he was two and a half feet from his property line when I designed that house, okay?
Looks further than that, but if, if only we had the photos.
He's talking about the other properties.
Yeah, that's what I mean, if we, if we had that, that'd be great.
Now, I've been before this board about 85 times, and a lot of them at Higgins Beach. And, and, of course, the makeup of the board changes. But in the past, when I came in for practical difficulty, it was done the way I presented it now. I bring with a narrative of what was to be asked, and we brought in all the data figures when it came to the board. That's how I've always done it in the past.
Sir, I appreciate that, and, and I, and I understand, that being said, the board is as the board is constituted, we've all received training from the MMA in how to consider practical difficulty variances. It is our decision, we appreciate your responses, thanks very much. I'd like to now open this to public comment, we have somebody who's been waiting here for a while, so, if we could.
Chair, can he pass out those pictures?
Um...
And there's copies for everybody.
All right, but in the future, I don't think, I think that's a no, but in the future, that's very helpful, because we don't go to these sites, we need to see that.
Yeah, and, and in fact, we, we're not supposed to go to these sites, we need to have the evidence presented so that anybody who comes through a meeting can see it. So, I, I really got, especially for photographic evidence, we can't throw it up there, yeah, we, we can read things, but we can't, I, I really can't, I'm sorry. Could you state your name and your address, and, uh, thank you very much, thank you for your patience.
All is well, I have given testimony many times. My name is Steffi Cox, I'm here representing my family. We live, we are the William W. Cox Revocable Trust on the town records. We are the abutter at 22 Ashton Street, and 22A is our little Sea Rose cottage. Our cottages are ancient also. The Sea Rose arrived at its current location on a bunch of logs from somewhere by Houghton Street. My grandpa and his buddies smoked cigars and camped up at, on the cliffs, past Cliff Street up there. We've been on the beach a very long time, and we've seen some of the fine work. We saw some of your work as well, I think you did Three Morning Street where the height had to be adjusted.
One more.
I believe you did. But much of the work being done is, is great, and we like having new neighbors, we miss the Cousins who were at 24, they were family friends. We grew up with them. Anybody who knew Bill Cousins, his voice was like thunder coming off the porch, talking to people in the rocking chairs. There, there are a lot of families who stay in our cottages as visitors, they also have been on the beach for generations, they have cousins in other houses, and we appreciate that Bill and Molly have continued to rent the small back cottage, the Starfish. There aren't many rentals anymore. When you invest quite a lot in a property, you tend not to rent it. And so, one of the values our family cherishes is the ability to welcome people, that they are planning not to consolidate the footprint into a ginormous something, but allowing for a second cottage. That sounds good. We just found out about their, we suspected there might be something afoot last summer when the surveyors came out and put the pins down, and my dad went out and talked to Bill, I can't remember Molly if you were there at the time, but dad, my dad, Bill, and talked to, to Bill Behrens about where the ledge line runs, it runs diagonally under our house right to the cliffs. So they probably are on ledge, but I'm not a geologist. Dad knows a lot, and if you want to, you know, get a tour, come and talk to him. And one of our concerns is, just to remind the board, that through a sort of a wink and a nudge and a handshake, some of the driveway is on our property, we don't have too much of an issue with that, but we are concerned about only hearing about this. I want to thank the town, if we hadn't received a postcard, we would not have known. You may have talked to Mark and his family, but you did not talk to us about your plans. So, we have, we are only learning what they are from yesterday afternoon, and the idea to bury the lines for electric is new to us, so we don't have really an opinion either way, because not all of my family has had a chance to understand what your plans are. So with that, I want to thank the, the board, and also Brian Longstaff for taking my call to help me understand your procedures. When I was chair of the Conservation Commission, our procedures were different, and it was a thousand years ago, so it's good to be caught up on, on how things work here. And I thank you for taking my comments. As I said, you know, great neighbors, but we're, we're catching up on what the plans are. Thank you.
Thanks, we appreciate that. Are there any other public comments in the audience today? Seeing none, I will, or actually, any other comments we've received after the materials deadline, Brian?
Just the email from Mr. Westervelt.
Gotcha.
It's pretty brief.
Got, we, yeah, we saw that one, and that's in the material package. Okay, with that, I will close public comment, and first ask for general comments from the board, and then we'll go through our findings of fact. Or do we want to go straight to the findings of fact? Joe?
I'll start this off. When I received the, the package, the submission, the original submission, and I, I felt in some of the comments we've heard earlier, that it was lacking in some detail, and that troubled me. That being said, I know that the challenges of some of the smaller lots in these, these beach communities, and, and the challenge of refinishing or rebuilding a home. But then when we arrived tonight, of course, additional documentation came to our attention, and, and also, I mean, lots of information. And while, while tonight I'm not a voting member, I'm an alternate, I, you know, I, I really feel if I were a voting member, that I'd, I'd be a bit challenged, because we were hit with an awful lot over the last hour. I guess I just wanted to say that, that's my two cents, it's, I, I, it would be a difficult decision for me, yeah, to vote for, just based on the fact that we were hit with a lot tonight, a lot of discovery, in the, as I understand, that the process is, is supposed to avoid a lot of discovery at the last minute, because it does put the board in a challenging position to make a finding of fact.
To reiterate that, Joe, and thank you for making that comment, I appreciate that, and, um, sorry we couldn't make you make a difficult decision, forcing you to vote tonight, so you get to have your out. I think the other reason why we have that, we, we put that requirement forward, that requirement exists within our, the regulations, to have materials available for review, it's not just for us, it is for public review. And we heard from a member of the public tonight that specifically stated, you know, they found out through the normal course of how we notify neighbors, the abutters, but what they would have had access to, or what they had access to when they got informed, was a very thin file, and a file that probably didn't have enough information for things like the underground burial of the electric wires, things like the thoughts on other abutters who had been consulted, that would have potentially brought other people to the table, or potentially would have allowed for a more substantive concurrence or, or disagreement by, by an abutter. So the public is not, is the other major and most important constituency that is, that is addressed by the requirement to have fulsome disclosure and fulsome application packages. So, yeah, it's unfortunate, it will make this a little bit quite difficult, but I think we've agreed that we've got enough, unless there is a motion, again, to defer this, I think we heard earlier that we felt that there was enough, so I did not hear a motion earlier. So with that in mind, we're gonna go through the findings of fact. We're gonna go the other direction and put Joe on the hot seat for number one, because we can. Joe, would you kind of summarize finding number one, and then we could have a discussion?
So, number one, the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general conditions of the neighborhood. As the applicant answered, the, the proposed house is 28 feet wide, a foot narrower than the existing home, falls within the size permitted for the Higgins Zone. The property is unique, as many of the properties in... in that neighborhood are, being narrow with homes close to each other. And as the applicant said, the general conditions of the neighborhood are very similar across the property. As we heard, there are other homes in the area, all on the right side of the property line. So as the applicant mentioned, trying to keep the home situated in a way where it would be consistent with the others around it. So I do find that that condition is met.
I'm going to give Shelley the first one.
I was just gonna, sorry, I'm sorry, David. This one always gets me because the, due to the unique circumstances of the property, I mean, I'm having a hard time with this. And I'd love somebody to convince me otherwise, but there seems like there was a couple different options. And one of the major reasons they're not doing the conformity is for our neighbor's view, which I commend, but we, like we said, we can't really take that into, you know, consideration technically when we're looking at this. So the unique circumstance of the property, it just, it's big enough to have two structures on it. It's not small. I just don't, I, someone please convince me otherwise, because I'm a no right now.
Good. We're going to go David next and we'll hit you up.
Okay. Yes, earlier when Walter was at the stand, I asked him a question which directly impacts this question. And that is, what's unique about this property? And quite honestly, there's nothing unique about it in the neighborhood, except for one thing, you know, which he pointed out very well. And that is the condition of the sewer line.
Shoreline?
The sewer.
Sewer.
Yeah, I can't speak sometimes, so forgive me for that. But yeah, that's what makes it unique. All right. It's, so that's something that's a pretty existing condition that's going to impact trying to build a structure that complies with setback conditions. Okay? So I know that's a very technical minor point because it's just to look at the property, it's no different. It may actually be bigger than, or, you know, than the other properties around it. And other properties around it, as has been pointed out, you know, by a few people, are in less compliance with setbacks. But again, there was no zoning back when all these homes were built. So that's, that was not intentional. It's just the way things happened back then. So my, I'd just like to reiterate, yes, there is something unique about this, this property, and that's that sewer line. And that's a big cost. If, if the project were to go through in a way that they would have to fully comply with the setback requirements, it would add considerable costs because of that sewer line. So the way I see this is, it is unique.
I agree it's unique. I think that not only the existing infrastructure, which has been there 100 years now, there is also the ledge that runs through that property, which is a unique situation at that. And there was one more thing I wanted to say. Maybe I'll remember it. But anyway, I do, I do view this as a unique situation.
I am coming around on that. But with the answer that was submitted, no, it's not. There's not unique, just so you guys know for future reference.
May I comment for a little?
Sure.
So, yes, I would agree, Shelley, that when Mr. Williams read from his submission, he did not mention anything about it being unique, which is why I questioned him as to the uniqueness of the sewer line on the property, in which he confirmed that, yes, that makes it unique. All right. So it wasn't part of his initial answer on paper that was submitted, but in his testimony tonight, he did clarify it. So.
I'm so sorry, Peter. I did remember my next comment.
Yes.
It's age. What can I say? So I do feel that it's important to take into consideration the impact on the abutter because it affects that property economically if they lose their sightline. So I like the idea that they're trying to preserve the character of the neighborhood and I like.
That comes up later. We're dealing with a unique.
Sorry. Okay.
That's not number one. That comes later. Richard, do you want to say anything?
No.
Okay. I would reiterate, the way that I think we read this one, and it's two things. Number one, the ledge underneath the properties in Higgins Beach are all, create a mishmash of things. We've seen Higgins Beach properties with an ability to dig a new foundation. And we've seen Higgins Beach properties that basically you can't do anything because you're hitting rock the second you scrape the surface. So this is unique for that reason. It's also unique because of, as you said, that, probably the resulting placement of where those pipes went 100 years ago. Again, I found it interesting that we only found out about that with five minutes left in the applicant's verbal remarks and nowhere to be found in their consultant's written submission. But we finally found out about it and I think, I think we have some information now. So with that in mind, I'm going to call the role, I'll ask you to call the role on all these, because this might be a contentious one. So could you call the role for this?
Christine Snow?
Aye.
Michelle Stevenson?
Aye.
David Boett?
Yes.
Peter Freylinger?
Aye.
And Richard Silken.
Yes.
Okay, number two, Richard.
Well, I don't want to steal your thunder. This was the one that you really wanted to go for. So why don't, why don't you take number two?
Can we defer that one?
She was all set to go.
Yeah, go for it.
The granting of a variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or fair market value of abutting properties. I believe that their current design has taken all of those issues into account and they've, they do not want to affect the abutter negatively. And the design is in keeping with the neighborhood.
Any comments? Okay, we'll, we'll call the role then, jury.
Christine Snow?
Aye.
Michelle Stevenson?
Aye.
David Boett?
Yes.
Peter Freylinger?
Aye.
And Richard Silken.
Yes.
Okay, Richard, now you can take number three.
The practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the applicant or a prior owner. Having had the discussion about number one, the practical difficulty is a combination of ledge and a 100-year sewer line. So it's entirely, it's impossible for it to be the result of actions taken by the current applicant or really even some recent owners. So I think they've met this criteria.
Any further discussion on that one?
The consumer came in in the 70s.
Just to, just to be clear, it's prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance in 91. So that would be the same thing. In that, so no further discussion though. And by the way, we are done, except on that one, yep, can't, can't, the public can't comment further. Sorry. But, so if we can call the role.
Christine Snow?
Aye.
Michelle Stevenson?
Aye.
David Boett?
Yes.
Peter Freylinger?
Yes.
Yes.
I think I'm going to give the phone to you, David, number four.
Oh, thank you. No other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except the variance. That is not true. However, when you take into consideration the problems it would create, you know, by meeting the setback requirement, I think this is the only practical solution. And, you know, it's, it would create a significant hardship to the applicant to try to do it in a way that would comply with the setback requirements. And therefore, I just don't think that that is feasible at all and that this is probably the most practical way to, to present a very attractive home, which would really improve the character and fit in with the character of this neighborhood as is required by the Higgins Beach requirements.
Joe?
So I have another problem with this one. No other feasible alternative is available. It doesn't say anything about practical. It's feasible, which I guess you could argue maybe are similar, but the owner already came up and said that they could renovate. So that's feasible to me. So there is a feasible, a feasible alternative to what they're proposing in addition to the other things that were maybe not practical, but still feasible. I don't know.
Joe, or? Question for Brian. Brian, if, if they were to pursue the alternative that was discussed earlier, changing the size, do they still find themselves in the position where a second floor or two and a half story, a bump out would require them to come and ask for relief?
If they were to reduce the width to 24, is that what you're talking about?
Right. They've got a nonconformance on the north side of the property. If they were to increase the height of the house within that nonconformance, they're back in front of us, aren't they?
It wouldn't be nonconforming if by reducing it to 24 feet, they met the eight-foot setback. That's what they're alleging, is that they'd have to reduce it down to 24 feet to meet an eight-foot setback, which is the required setback. They wouldn't have to come for a variance.
You're talking about the height, though.
I'm talking about the height on the north side.
It would be a total redesign likely, which.
Because the house would still.
But if it's a conforming footprint, it can, it doesn't matter.
Well, but not with Higgins.
I'm not sure I really understand the question.
We've had three-story buildings.
The only thing that wouldn't meet it would be the stair tower dormer that Mr. Wilson referred to earlier, which, which I tried to beat out of him with every ounce of my being. And, and I would, I'm not going to say anymore.
That's what you're talking about, right, Joe?
That's what I'm, yeah.
Yes, that's what I'm referring to.
That part requires a 12-foot setback because a dormer requires 12 feet from the property line to the face. And that's why I tried to get him to change his stripes, but he won't.
Question for Brian, and then another comment. Brian, is that technically a dormer?
I call it a dormer.
And why?
Hmm?
Why?
Technically. Because technically, it's a piece of the roof that pops up. It is not in a consistent plane with the rest of the roof.
It changes the dimensions of the roof?
Yeah. Well, it doesn't change the dimensions of the roof.
It changes the surface of the roof.
It quacks like a dormer, so it is a dormer.
Okay, sounds good. Okay. And also, I'd like to just address feasible alternatives. I want to go back to that issue. Okay. So, you know, as was pointed out, the applicant wouldn't even, it would not even need to be here tonight were it not for two things. Okay. First, renovation. Second, is to build it to the 24 by 38 or whatever, you know. You know, that would not require a variance. They could do that without even coming here tonight. So, you know, I would suggest that we kind of, you know, look, look at this along with the other things that have to be satisfied as far as practical difficulty, because that's, it really all ties into this. So I don't know how we can really look at this independent of the others. It's just, that's, it's very complex. So.
Not sure I agree with that, but my comment on this one would be, basically be, I don't believe the applicant has explored anywhere near a meaningful range of alternatives. And one of the alternatives, which is renovation, they've addressed, said, yeah, we can do that. And, and so again, no other feasible alternative. Feasible doesn't say economic maximizing. Feasible doesn't say it will give us the most valuable piece of property when we're done with this. Feasible doesn't say the absolute lowest cost option. Feasible is feasible. And we haven't seen a range of feasible alternatives explored. And the ones that we have had proposed come back with a, yeah, that could probably work. So to me, this one's pretty clearly not met.
Mr. Chair, I disagree 100% with that.
Cool.
We have never had an applicant in front of us where there wasn't a feasible alternative using that broad definition of feasible alternative. The issue here, as David pointed out, is the context of the applicants that we're talking about. Every proposal that we have seen, we could identify a feasible way of reducing the size of the house and letting them live in a smaller house. We could, we could create a feasible alternative that would have cost twice the value or twice the cost by renovating, taking up the entire foundation and rebuilding it. And what we have here is that the two feasible alternatives, in quotation marks, that David mentioned, the renovation, they have demonstrated will cost in excess of $100,000 on the foundation alone, plus whatever renovating costs that they would incur. There's no estimate, but once you reach 100,000 on a project like that, it's no longer feasible by most people's notion of what feasible is. The second alternative that they presented to us, or that has been described, is lengthening the house and narrowing it. Well, when you do that, there are consequences. The consequences are the entire design of the house has to change, number one, and number two, we block the view shed of the neighbor behind them or to the north of them. I mean, that violates criteria number two. So now we're stuck in this never, never land. Do we, how do we value that alternative against criteria number two? And it strikes me that criteria number two has to stand on its own. They've created a project that doesn't create any problems for the neighbor. And the alternative of a 24 by 38 house is just not feasible, given criteria number two.
How much would criteria number two cost?
You can't solve the criteria number two unless you make a square in the middle of the house so that people can see through it to preserve the view shed.
Well, my point is, is we don't have any evidence whatsoever that any cost benefit analysis was done for that.
You can't do a cost benefit analysis.
Sure you can. You can engage the neighbor and have the neighbor come here and represent as a member of the public, as other members of the public can do, saying, I don't like this redesign because of, it's blocking my view. Or they can say, no, this works fine.
But you're not, you're not going to get, I mean, if we go down that path, every time one of us identifies a feasible alternative that they could have pursued, we are going to have to go back to all of the neighbors and ask them whether or not this feasible alternative is acceptable to you.
Richard, we haven't identified the feasible alternatives. They have. They brought to us the idea that these were possible alternatives.
No, in terms of our questioning of them. They did not explore those alternatives as part of their applicant. They would never have had a cause to do it. They have a design. They're asking us to evaluate the design. That's our job. Our job isn't to develop, well, all of the scope of possible alternatives that they could have looked at. If we go down that path, we are never going to grant a variance on this committee because there is always going to be some alternative that could have been pursued. And then we're going to have to start the whole public comment period over again, the whole application period over again, to get the comments from the people.
Practical variances are not supposed to be easy, Richard.
But they are supposed to happen.
They're, no, they're not supposed to happen. No, that's, that's a false statement.
If they weren't supposed to happen, we wouldn't have them. They are supposed to happen when there's a practical difficulty.
They're supposed to be, it's supposed to be possible to get them.
That's what I'm saying.
To say it's supposed to happen is an absurd read of the variance process.
A, but they have to occur. Not every instance, but if it was impossible to get a variance, then there would be no need for us. If they're hard to get, that's why there's the practical difficulty. And we've laid out the scope of the practical difficulty here. Now, if you don't believe that that's a practical difficulty, then you'll vote against it.
Yeah, I think.
But from my perspective, $100,000 under one option and blocking the view shed under another option and having some other consequences under a third option that somebody may consider, or a fourth option or a fifth option, that's just a rabbit hole that I'm not going down. We have in front of us an applicant who's provided us an application and we have to evaluate. evaluate that application.
I would agree. We also have to go, I would say we also have to hang our hats on common sense interpretation of rules like feasible alternative. But I think we've reached a point where we can then have a role call on this one anyway. So.
Hold on.
Oh, damn it.
So feasible, all right, I'd just like to explore that a little bit and just kind of add on to what Richard said. Yes, the applicant testified tonight that the proposed 24 by 38 would cause them extreme cost because of the sewer line problem. So that alone rules that out as feasible.
No, the 24 by 38 would not have led to that.
Webber, yes, it does.
No, they, it's on the same footprint. They extend backwards, and they would build the foundation off the ledge, but they would not at that point need to move the sewer lines. The sewer lines would continue to run under the driveway and hook up as they, presumably where they have or as they have. So that's how it was represented, as I heard.
Negative impact on the neighbor.
Yes. The 24 by, 24 by 38 version is a negative impact on the neighbor. That's what they're raising.
Okay. Well, I understand the impact on neighbors, and to me, that's not a point at all.
So it's a feasible alternative, is what you just admitted.
No, but, you know, maybe I misunderstood the presentation that was given regarding the extra cost that would be required in order to comply with setback, okay?
Yeah, no.
Which would be to move the house over, and that triggers the need to redo the entire sewer system and driveway.
No, that would have located a 28-foot house.
No, renovation doesn't require that.
No, no, no. This is, the meeting of setback is they take their new 28-foot with design, move it over so it meets the four-foot setback. Now, it's in the driveway, and the driveway has to be dug up, and they have to relocate the sewer lines, and that requires blasting, or not necessarily blasting the shale, but probably blasting into the shale. That's what I heard. So it's taking the 28-foot design and moving it south four feet, not taking what we, what is the, what I've described as a feasible alternative, the 24-foot house, keeping it with the existing foundation lines and just punching the back and locating foundation on shale in the back.
Let's see if I understand this correctly. Would putting a 24 by 38 move the house further away from the driveway?
No, it would keep the same driveway. They would butt the driveway the same point.
All right. So it's a non-issue?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chair, I just want to offer, just for the board, I just Googled the definition of feasible. It says you can do it without too much difficulty, okay? Maybe that just gives a little context to that, that thing. I just offered that up. Thank you.
So, anything else? Okay. Shall we call a roll? Got it. Thank you. Doreen, if you would.
Christine Snow?
Aye.
Michelle Stevenson?
No.
David Boort?
Yes.
Peter Freylinger?
No.
And Richard Silken.
Yes.
Okay, that goes 3-2. The granting of variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties. I think it's my turn. I don't see anything that's been presented in this that would say no to this. The, first off, the existing property is in conformance, but the design that they're choosing, the relative setbacks they're choosing, the, all the rest, very much within what we see on a month-to-month basis from Higgins Beach. This is nothing out of the ordinary for that. So I would say five would be a yes. Any comments on that one? Doreen, if you would?
Christine Snow?
Aye.
Michelle Stevenson?
Yes.
David Boort?
Yes.
Peter Freylinger?
Yes.
And Richard Silken.
Yes.
Okay. Joe, we'll give you another easy one. Granting a variance will not have adverse on the natural environment.
Number six, granting of a variance will not reasonably adverse effect on the natural environment. No, it will not.
I actually appreciated the applicant's terse reply. Any comment on that one? Didn't you think so? We'll call the role. Doreen?
Well, before you do that, I'm trying to, I'm trying to craft findings of fact, and no is not a good finding. Can we expand on that just a little bit?
I can expand on that. So the proposed, the proposed change to the property, the applicant is going to build a new design on approximately the same footprint as the existing home. Same is true of the carriage house out behind. So given that and that we have a reputable contractor who's going to be involved in the project and would be familiar with all of the EPA requirements and runoff DEP requirements, I have no concern that there's going to be any environmental impact.
You'll shorten that one up, right, Brian?
I will add that naturally, the natural environment's going to look nicer because they're going to bury their lines.
There you go.
See, I do have something good to say, guys.
Call the role, please. Christine?
Aye.
Michelle Stevenson?
Aye.
David Boort?
Yes.
Peter Freylinger?
Aye.
And Richard Silken.
Yes.
And again, we'll leave this one just to be confirmed by staff. The property is not located wholly or in part within the shorelineed area or the flood hazard zone?
Confirmed.
Gotcha. We will accept that as read. And then finally, number eight, which, I've got to get my language for, the strict applications of the dimensional standards of the ordinances to the property for which a variance is sought would both preclude a use of the property which is permitted in the zone in which it is located, and would also result in significant economic injury to the applicant. I don't know. Who wants to take this one? No, I just read the, what it is. So. But, but, but thank you. I will. Actually.
I can start on that one.
Go for it, Richard. Thank you very much.
What the owner wishes to do is to build a house that is conforming with the character code for Higgins Beach, and that allows for a 28-foot wide house. It allows for other dimensions of the property. They want to build that house that's allowable to be built. However, because of the nature of the property and because of the issues associated with the ledge and the setback requirements, they can't build that property on the, they can't build that house on the existing piece of property without either incurring a significant economic injury in the form of very excessive higher costs to conform to, or to build in conformance with the zoning ordinances or with a variance, which would relieve them of that economic injury. So given that, if they want to build the property, which they otherwise would be allowed to do it, they can't do it unless they incur significant injury, and therefore, I think that the criteria is met.
I think you're arguing a different point on this one, Richard. So this one would be if they were, if the property were, say, 15 feet more narrow, then the strict adoption of the, of the dimensional standards of the ordinance would create a house that would be like 13 feet wide. And that would be, preclude the use of the property and would result in significant economic injury. In this case, a strict application of the setbacks allows them to have a 24 or even a 28-foot house. It's just that, so, so this is not so much about the house's design. This is about if the property itself had dimensional standards that could, that had a buildable footprint that effectively precluded an economically viable home, we would find on this one, on this one, A, I think the answer is this is not applicable because the applicant is able to build. Therefore, yes, the, or the answer is no, but it, what it means is we vote no, and that means we should allow this variance to go forward. Does that make sense? Yeah, because, think about it, because the strict application of the ordinance would both preclude a use of the property which is permitted, which strict application would not preclude it, and would also result in significant economic injury to the applicant. I don't think the building footprint issues are the cause here. So in other words, I kind of go, and maybe now I'm looking at Brian, I kind of go on this one as NA. This somehow just doesn't fit the terms of this variance request.
Well, I'm trying to make it fit, but Brian may be good ideas here.
I think, I thought where you were going with this, and I would kind of agree, is I guess the first thing is, did you determine, you're trying to determine, is there a practical difficulty based on the definition? That's your job tonight. So it says both preclude a use that would otherwise be permitted in the zone and would, would cause significant economic injury to the applicant. So they could, they could fail on the first count and pass on the second count.
Got it. Okay, I think that's where I'm going to.
That's where I thought you were going.
Yeah. So in other words, Richard, it's not the footprint issue. There is significant economic injury, and that's why I think this one would be the yes. Does that make sense?
It can't be, it can't be non-applicable.
Yeah, got it. Okay. No, I see what you're, I see what you're saying.
Well, I kind of see what you're saying. It's, it is applicable, but we've already discussed part B in the, in number two. So, like, we've already established that, so you're really establishing the first part of it.
Well, number two and number three are abutting properties for number two and practical, or sorry, number four. A feasible alternative would be number four. This one is significant economic injury. And on this one, I think significant economic injury, meeting the strict terms of the, of the footprint, which is essentially moving the house, tearing up the driveway and blowing through the shale, is a significant injury. So I think this beats on B. Whereas in A, there are other alternatives, but if they don't use those alternatives and just meet the setback rules, they'd have to blow stuff up and, I keep going at that, but I just have that image in my mind. They'd have to blow up shale, and it 'd cost a lot of money. So, so, yeah. Okay, we can call the role, I think. Seeing a lot of head nuts.
Christine Snow?
Aye.
Michelle Stevenson?
Aye.
David Boort?
Yes.
Peter Freylinger?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I would also just like to add, we are not lawyers, and we are a group of volunteers to interpret this, and Brian Longstaff is our advisor. So thank you for bearing with us. Sometimes we have to talk it out. But, sorry, Chair.
No, you're right. And you're right. We are a citizen volunteer body tasked with a quasi-judicial function, which is to interpret the laws the ordinances has given, but that's what our, that's what the state of Maine, which encourages citizenship democracy, has determined is the best way to get to the best outcomes, which I get, I know, I'm getting there.
Michelle, never apologize for not being a lawyer.
We do have a lawyer on the board, but he has a cold.
Okay, with that in mind, do I have a motion to approve the appeal?
So moves.
Dave, I'll take David first, and I'll take Richard's in second. Any discussion, or we'll go for the vote? Doreen?
Christine Snow?
Aye.
Michelle Stevenson?
Aye.
David Boort?
Yes.
Peter Freylinger?
No.
And Richard Silken.
Yes.
Did you get that? Okay. That's four to one. The motion passes. The appeal is granted. Thank you very much. Okay, and please, Richard especially, you've done some great work in my neighborhood. You've done some great work in my neighborhood. Yeah, next, next time, just, yeah, a lot more, please.
Can I see them now?
Yeah, let's see them in five, three, hold on, hold on, hold on. Let's see. We'll see them in three minutes. We have to adjourn the meeting first. Thank you very much. Unless there are further comments, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Michelle. And Joe gets a second. All in favor, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Okay, now let's see the pictures.